As COO and this is also sort of over the years bounced around. Finance, time attorneys kind of watch different places. So we sort of feel that it's broadly more operational. Questions I've had while trying to go through the list and figure out who's using spaces, why some of those types of things. So. So I'm sure he's here as well for any questions that may come up. And I would say that some of your questions. I'll get back to you, but we'll get back to you in a few days. So this is. There's. Are there some cleanup type items on these certificates of insurance, things like that, that we're, you know, going to keep. To work through to make sure that they're all up to date. Like the big engine. Specific on my end, but if there's questions.
Are there any questions regarding the lease report? Or I'm sorry, are there any questions regarding leases of town properties? Representative Stili.
I want to stand up really.
You should, well, just speak really loud and we'll let Laura raise your hand if you can't hear her.
I'm gonna talk, well. I'm gonna talk louder this time. Can I face this way and you can still hear me? Okay, so the first question that I have is regarding Haydo Farm. I know that that's been in discussion off and on over the years. And there's been, you know, there's something around potentially like turning that into a town farm. How much is that being utilized by the public right now? I couldn't find like anything specific going on there, but that could be my. People. And then I have another question after that. I'll have you to that one first.
So, so it's a.
Questions.
Well, so it's, it's a private lease. I don't think the lease. Higher lease, which is recently expired, acquired. Much other than farming. I know there are a couple of community events there. I think the first election is going to be meeting with operator of the farm and discuss if that is the lease.
We, we. In the schools that questions that'll.
We can't hear you.
So. So the lease requires farming, does not require. This is a lease that goes back to 2022. It is now expired. I think the first election's going to be meeting with the operator of the farm. Discuss it. If you guys want to see a copy of the lease that is recently expired, we can give you a copy.
First election Gerber, did you want to comment on this? It looks like you were, no?
No, I mean, we're gonna be.
Great.
Eating with the.
I didn't know. It looked like you were about to stand, so.
No, no.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions regarding, oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Chat down.
Okay.
I'm standing up now. Okay, so my second question was regarding Fairfield Theater Company. And there are two different leases on there. One is for like a patio area and then the others for the building. And then also like I received a letter from them basically kind of saying that. Where they were asking for donations from the public. I'm just wondering what the current status is with that and.
Getting fired or shit on.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering what the current status is for those leases and in general, like with the organization.
So. In general, on the organization, now first election. So you want to go for that?
Well, Fairfield Theater Company has 10 more years on.
Okay.
Yeah, their lease was revised years ago to go through, I believe, 2035.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next. Fundraising their nonprofit and they, I think they, like many, have experienced a lot of. Challenges and differences in a imposed sort of COVID environment. And I think that that's. I know that that is why they're.
Okay.
Cheating out. But the town has had discussions. With them.
Mr. Becker, could you just speak a little louder?
Just that the administration has had discussions with them and is generally aware of whether that and. Ongoing in ways to always support them if possible.
Thanks.
I'll set representative still. Great. Any other questions from the body? Representative Estherita.
Yeah, can Estherita, District One? Just a question. Are we optimizing? The commercial value of any rents that we're receiving? And then what is the process to make sure that we're getting market rates on that kind of stuff?
Good question. The ones that are there.
I hope you have a good answer.
So, well, so the leases that you're seeing this report?
Yeah.
These all predate the current administration. Many of them relate to agreements that still have probably 10 years. I think only a couple of leases have been entered into in this year. In terms of the rental rates, it's a valid comment. I think that's something that the COOs can review as part of this process as we clean up leases. And as they expire, if we're locked into a lease, we're down. But as they expire, I know that's something that the administration should look at.
Yeah, we haven't. At this point, we haven't necessarily been presented with the opportunity to do something about it, but.
Do most of these leases, are they fixed term or do they have like an auto like year to year renewal?
They're all different.
Yeah, okay.
There's no, there's no continuity in terms of the form of the document.
Representative McCabe.
And I would say on that, more things we're trying to see if we can, obviously not everything is going to fit that way, but it is. It's, it's just a bunch of things. We should be able to standardize and that way. We're going to be. Look at some of these state day back, you know, the earlier days of, you know, restaurants and.
I'm sorry, Mr. Becker, you.
Sorry, I'm turning and it's.
Out and then you.
So I'm, I'm just saying.
It's hard when we get questions from the front row.
Yeah, sorry, I'm.
You guys stand maybe.
So.
Mr. Becker, you've been asked to just stand, sorry.
A microphone.
So, so just the, the only comment that I, that I was, I was making is we're going to look to try to standardize. This is their, it's a hodgepodge of different types of formats and we're not even on the same issues. It's obviously it's across the many administrations. Some of these date back over two decades, but where possible to obviously maximize. Return, but also, you know, take into account, we want to certainly at times encourage some of these activities, particularly the downtown ones there. But if you look at some of the steps that we've taken with different buildings and, and sort of, you know, over the last year. One of the approaches that we're certainly taking is also maximizing use of our own buildings before we do square footage. Make sure that things are aligned with the town's, you know, needs and. Banners of that bit being that their town assets, including our, our land. Difficulties being that some of these, most of these are leases that were already entered into. Some of them aren't even up in time soon. But we're going to try to work through that. And I think that that's sort of where I got back to at least working with the town attorney. Trying to sort of put visibility on what's happening in all of these different locations and.
Thank you. Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District Four. A question about 34 Mill Plain, the commuter lot. Do you have a sense of its current usage? And then when the Yale Hospital used it as a vaccination site? Did they pay rent and was that parking authority?
Predate me on that. I can get you an answer on what they did. It is not currently under the parking authority though. The town has, has, has taken that back, does not take a payment from the parking authority for that. That space any longer. Current use. I know that sometimes when there's town, you know, contractors doing, you know, work with large equipment, we've allowed them for. Limited instances to park there overnight. There's obviously, I mean, you know, beyond that, my answer would be similar to probably what most people see. There's some activity in the lot, but there's, there's not an exorbitant amount for the most part. Sportsplex. And rec manages their parking and the parking for the train station, you know, is even on their peak days. It's not necessarily going in there at this time. I've. So. Can I get you an answer on whether they paid or not during that window? I do know that the.
So if somebody wanted to use that space, would they go to the town to inquire about renting it?
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Steele.
Thanks, Jeff Steele, District Three. Just a question on the FT back to Fairfield Theater Company. In the notes, just say, notice it here. I didn't know this, but. So in addition to the rent, they also get, or the town also gets $2 per ticket, so plus 5% warehouse revenue. Is that, that goes to the town obviously, right?
Correct.
And that, how long has that been in place? Has that changed over the years or is?
The revenue share piece?
Percentage share and that dollar per ticket. I'm just curious.
I know that the revenue piece, as long as I can remember, that was always.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Like, so there's a lease plus revenue share. Is that fairly standard model for something like, like that? Or is it just a month or lease only? Do you know, do you know the history at all in terms of that? Arrangement or?
It has changed.
That has existed.
Just the revenue share is in the lease. It's not a separate document. So they're not paying rent. I mean, the rent is. Well, pretty nominal, I think, right?
Yeah, and it's a.
And they're nowhere near.
The base rent is 287 a foot. So.
That's it? Yeah.
So, I mean.
So that was agreed upon where it was a revenue split. You know, higher rent, I'm assuming.
That's my understanding. It goes back.
This also dates back to.
Yeah, I know.
There was very little activity downtown and they were trying to come up with a blend to drive.
Okay.
Let it be an economic driver, right? So. As with many of them, they're pretty unique.
I'll set representative Steele.
Yep, thank you.
Representative McCleod.
Megan McCleod, District Two. Question for an update on a child's garden at 100 Mona Terrace. I know that was a. Highly contested renegotiation and it's already here, it sounds like in a couple of months. So do we have a status on what to expect? Where the negotiations stand? I know it's under extension, but what can we expect for the remainder of the year?
Representative Gerber, do you want to answer that?
Yeah.
First election. I always do that. Won't get on my head.
Sign, we settled a lease, you know, an extension through May of 2026 with Child's Garden.
So not 2025, that's a.
No, it's through 2026.
She says 2026.
26, okay.
Thank you. Representative McCleod, any other questions? Great. Representative Horton.
Margaret Horton, District 10. So I apologize if this was already answered. On the ones where the lease period has already ended, is the assumption that.
Representative Horton, can you stand up and speak louder?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was looking at my computer screen.
Turn around maybe.
On the leases where the lease period is already ended, is it safe to assume that those are just continuing on like a yearly basis? Kind of like, I'm looking at like the Centro, Centro and Chelsea, like those patios. That finished in like 2018, 2020. Another one, 2022. Are they just going? How does that work?
I think they really continue month to month.
That's what I was.
Terminates.
And then. Oh, look at that. If I just scrolled over.
They're continuing to follow. So it's terms of original lease agreement to follow.
Oh, I said that. I just didn't, okay. I just didn't know if there was a point where we. Share those. And then on number 15, which is the Fairfield Historical Society, is that accurate? That it, their lease is over in 2104? It could have been like 100 year lease.
I was gonna say, I think that was one of those, you know, like 90 members. So I think that does make sense.
Okay.
It is a 99 year lease. Yeah.
Thank you. I'll set Representative Horton.
Thank you.
Representative Carol.
I'm just gonna go.
Okay.
Calendar, so.
Chris Carroll, District Eight. Drew, can you hear me?
I can, Chris. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You, you said that, you know, none are up for, and I thought Margaret might go here. What appears to be the largest lease is the parking authority. And it ended in June of 24, in the notes, which I read, Mark. It was paid through December of 24. So it's the biggest lease. Passed their extension. I think it's reasonable, or maybe it's not reasonable for us to ask, what is the procedure going to be? This is our single biggest revenue source in this. Their lease is up. We're talking about, we're going to come up with a process. I think it would be interesting to know what that is and. I mean, that's going to be done, or maybe it was done and this isn't updated.
So the payment, if you were to date back, had to do originally with actually work that was being done. And there was a bond and it was supposed to essentially cover that. So they have made. Some degree of the argument that it shouldn't even be at the amount that it is at. They've also made the argument that. They are, this has been discussed at the Board of Finance probably two or three different times so far over the last year. Because they've also brought up. You know, at some level, you know, that they've got lower revenues. You know, we, we had the administration side, but I mean, the town does the actual financing for them. So it's an open book. We can see. Where that revenue expense wise. And, and have maintained that they can obtain at least a level of payment that they have in there right now. They, it is an open lease. They did, originally, we're not going to make the payment. For. For last year's fiscal year. So we budgeted on a, on a, on a fiscal year. Basis and we had budgeted for the full amount of. A day later. Agreed to pay the entire amount and we're in the budget process right now, trying to work through. I believe that they can even. So at the same token, they're sitting on $300 roughly in an operating account. Capital account. So we know that they have the liquidity. Obviously, you wouldn't want to put. So we have made relatively open that we are certainly looking at. You know, all aspects of the parking authority and the way it's managed and budgeted. So. That would cause us to not rush into any sort of a, of a, of a lease or anything to that extent. Right now. So essentially going on a year to year basis, but. Okay.
I'm not sure I'm clear.
It's an imperfect answer, but I.
At least it's expired.
Correct.
And we don't have a process. For how we will standardize the lease, which I heard you say, which I think is a great idea. So nobody can go back and say, why is that a sweetheart deal for somebody? Nope. Standard process for how we do it. Here's the biggest one we got and we don't seem to have a process.
Well, so, and it goes back.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
And I say standard, I say square footage. I, I think that was generally, it might have been going, but some of these are literally businesses that are renting. So you're on a cell tower, you're a business, you're renting something, you're taking square footage on the sidewalk, you're a business, right? There's an economic. And an overall community, you know, community benefit on either of them, but they're ultimately businesses. The parking is not a business. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a separate. Fund that's structured with a separate board that's done by ordinance, but it's essentially acting as a piece of. On Fairfield and it's, so if we were to say standardize and, and ask them for a rent payment for using that much land in the center of downtown Fairfield. You know, that would be, you didn't even be able to afford it. Few people would be able to unless they then did more with the land. So. You know, so it's a little bit difficult to standardize per se, but. The answer for why it's expired and we haven't gone and tried to negotiate and do a lease is we're looking at the whole construct of. Of the parking authority right now. We've had many meetings with them. We're trying to understand their revenue forecasts and, and, and their. I mean, just, just the fair pre lot discussion on Mill Plain as an example. You know, something that was completely filled, that's not, but they also don't have a payment towards it anymore. So there's a number of different. We are trying to do this largely before budget.
Thanks. I'm just trying to understand if this is better.
Thank you, Representative Kuhn.
John Kuhn, District Seven, for all of you in the back. Just to follow up on Chris's questions on that, is, are the financials of this in the town financials broken out in a footnote or something? I just quickly tried to find them.
Correct.
Okay.
They used, yeah, they're, they're within ours. And they. While they are set up as a separate fund, they're actually.
But so the revenues and profit, if there is any accrue to the town? Okay. And is this the same way?
stays in a separate fund, just to be.
It stays in a separate fund that's designated for that.
Designated, yeah.
Is, is this the way other towns operate their parking authority?
So. There's a mix. So you can go, you can go, you know, some of the towns. Some of them, they, they don't have a parking authority that does their trains and it's state. I mean, look at our, for instance, two out of three of our, our stations. If you go to one town over in the other direction, you get Westport and the police department is tasked with managing it. And it runs through. Through the books without, there's no board. It's, it's, it's not structured in any way like what Fairfield has. And they, they worry about, you know, how they close, opening closer books from beginning to end. They're not worried about. You know, like, like this sort of keeping a fund going and, and. It's a, it's a different construct. So one by one, as you go down the line, it's, it's, it's different in each situation.
So the answer is sure, sure, whatever.
Part of, part of why we have the question, you know, does it make sense what we're doing? Does it not? You know, it was something that was started under John Sullivan in this form. If you go back, you read through some of the original things. It appeared that it looked like they were going to do other types of parking and whatnot with it. That hasn't really transpired. Our police department manages all of the other aspects of, of parking and, and enforcement and, and management of. In, in, you know, in the town. And so you've got that aspect and then you have two, but not three of the train stations. So it's a little fragmented right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Juniak. Welcome to RTM. By the way, Representative Juniak is new to our body.
Thank you. Eric Juniak, District Six. Just had a question about the Fairfield Indoor Tennis. Want to just make sure I understand it. Because there's, there's a summer component and a winter component. And so. For the 2906, for the, the summer months, that would be multiplied by four, right? Then the winter one, the 6433 would be multiplied by eight. Whereas in the next to the, the town next to the, almost to the right, seems like you multiply each by 12.
Yes. Yep. We'll clean those up. Okay, it was just angelized incorrectly.
All right. Thank you.
Goodbye.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Representative Colburn.
Good job. Colonel Colburn, District Eight. I want to go back to the Mill Plain Lot one. Somewhat similar to Chris. First, I think I missed it. You said it's not, it's not under the parking authority anymore, correct? Who is it under now?
Oh, it's the towns.
It's just the towns. So what's.
It's not been leased out then, right?
So, so what's, I guess my question is, what's the, what's the long-term plan for that piece of land? It's in a very desirable location, unlike the, even though the, the regular train station parking lot is not being leveraged at what it was before COVID. It's still being leveraged in a reasonable manner. That one is mostly 99% vacant for the most part. So we have, we have an idea what our plan is with that.
Lots of ideas have passed around. We don't have any direct plans at this time, but. Say. At least. Couple of weeks, someone comes up with some sort of an idea related to it all. So. But, you know, I think being cautious about that. When you see, you know, variety of, of, of different things occur. POCD would certainly be one. Look at what that ultimately may never may not bring. And. You know, this, you know, this. Just looking at the town space overall and that footprint, you've got, you know, Turner's, you know, the Turner site at, at some point is going to come online. Does that cause, you know, just, does that cause a shift for watching rec in that location? Does that free up? Does town now have two adjacent properties? Doesn't want to do something with one, but not the other? I mean, those are just the, the types of things. Not to say we want to wait years and years at this point, but I think it's one of those cautious and, you know. And, and I think that while there's a number of different uses that people have, it does generally back up. It backs up to, you know, commercial and highway on one side. It backs up to residential on another side. So we need to be, you know, just cautious and, and try to, try to identify what that may look like and how it fits into everything else.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the body? Anyone on Zoom have a question just as to be recognized in the comments? I see none. Thank you both for coming. We, while we have Attorney Pears here, we're going to jump to agenda item 13. Which is regarding a property line revision between town owned property at 150 Villa Avenue. And property owned by Alan Diamond at 91 Algonquin Road. I believe I saw Mr. Diamond online. Nope, never mind. I think it's a different diamond.
There were two diamonds. There was an A diamond.
Okay. Backup for this item could be found in pages 81 to 88. Go ahead, Attorney Pears.
So the town acquired 150 Villa Avenue and there are a couple of references on it. These were brought to our attention by. Mr. Diamond, the current owner. He's transferring his property. So he requested that this be addressed. You can see on the map, there are three parcels designated. This is like on the. The left, lower left border of his property. His property is 91 Algonquin. Our property is 150. There's parcel X. That's a piece that's from the town. There's parcel Y, which is the stair, landscape stair encroachment. And parcel Z is, so parcel Y is going to him. Parcel Z is coming to the town. And then there's an existing chain link fence that is being removed. The. New owner is, knew about the buyers. This is going to get recorded in connection with the closing. So we don't have to worry about subordinating any leads. Good, good title and we'll update the town's title policy. The town did get a title policy. Two. Questions?
Are there any questions regarding this property revision? See none. Thank you, Attorney Pears. Moving back in our agenda to item five, which is to hear a report from the Joint Retirement Investment Board. We have Chair Ken Brockfield. Yeah, online?
Um, yeah, you guys hear me? I'm on the phone.
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Great. Backup for this item can be found on pages four to 29. Go ahead, Mr. Brockfield, and give us a report. Thank you.
I apologize. I'm, I'm in the car in Florida, down visiting and taking care of my parents. So this is going to be a brief and incomplete report, although Mr. Becker, if he's there, is just as knowledgeable as I am about this right now. So he can fill in any gaps. And I don't have the paperwork you guys are looking at in front of me. I apologize. But. And this is my first report to this body. I took over the, or was, I should say, chosen by my. Board members, the chair, just at the last meeting. So everything is, is kind of new. I'd be willing to take questions. You know, it's a long-term liability for the town, both the pension and the OPEF. And we manage it in that fashion. So the truth is, we try not to focus too much on the month to month or quarter to quarter. Investment results. We're, we're more interested in, in a rational portfolio that matches up with the risk. Tolerance of the town and the nature of the liabilities, what we owe our employees down the road. You know, I think everybody is aware that the last two years in the market have been extraordinarily good. And we have participated to some degree in that. Longer term, our results are, are more mediocre, to be perfectly honest. And one of the things that I'm looking to do as a new chair is to do a top to bottom reevaluation. Of the asset allocation. To see if we could. Put ourselves in a little bit better footing and have a better chance of meeting the discount rate. So the discount rate is the investment return that's assumed by the actuary when they're calculating the. Valuation, the funding valuation of the plans, which is really important because that, that, that's the basis for which the. Annual contributions from the town emanate. And over almost the entire time I've been involved, we haven't met that, that number. involved, we haven't met that, that number. And the town has had to kick in, you know, millions of dollars annually. So we're going to try and see if we can take a look at the entire portfolio and, and look at it with a fresh set of eyes, basically. Um, I guess I would ask if there's any questions in particular, and I hope, hope everybody can hear me. I apologize. I'm on I ninety-five.
We, we can, can hear you. Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, regarding the Joint Retirement Investment Board? Um, and I don't, I don't see, I think Mr. Becker might have, uh, laughed. Um, I don't see him. Oh, he's hiding on me. So he's here, but I don't know if he can answer anything if they come up. But are there any questions regarding this report? Again, if you're, uh, a member on Zoom, just, uh, asked to be recognized, Representative Britton.
Uh, Peter Britton, District One. A, a quick question. I see the spread looks like to be eighty percent equities and twenty percent bonds, fixed income. Is that what you're going to be evaluating and see if you can reassess that?
Um, actually, I'm not sure what you're looking at. We really have, it's not exactly the way you, oh, boy, somebody just flew by me here. Uh, we have about eighty, we have about eighty percent of the portfolio in liquid markets, and, and that eighty percent is split between equities and bonds. Um, more, more equities than bonds. And then within the equities, we have domestic and international. And then within the bonds, we have domestic and international. And then the remaining twenty percent of the portfolio would be in alternatives. That would be things like private equity, hedge funds, private real estate, et cetera. So to be perfectly candid, that's a great question. The two areas that I am focusing on and, and hoping that the board will be, uh, willing to look at along with me is, uh, whether or not the international allocation makes sense. Uh, I don't want to go into more detail than necessary, but there's a good argument that the international allocation doesn't make sense for a pension board that has liabilities, uh, denominated in dollars. And then we have twenty percent of the funds, uh, to these alternatives, which are highly illiquid, have enormously high fees, and have had very, very, very poor, uh, performance over time. So those would be the two areas. The international allocation and alternatives as a total concept are the two things that I'd like to look at and really do a deep dive and see if we can make some changes.
But no recommendations at this point is the break. You go with that.
No, I mean, I could give you my own opinion, but I'd rather hold off until we, uh, get a chance to talk at the board. We did also, I should add, that we recently, uh, Vanguard was our advisor, our so-called O C I O, outsourced Chief Investment Officer. They, uh, went out of, they, they closed down that business, so we had to go out and select a new advisor. And we ended up with BlackRock. You've probably heard of BlackRock. They're one of the biggest, uh, uh, maybe the biggest financial firm in the world. Uh, and they're relatively new as well, uh, to our, uh, pension plan. So I think, I think it's a, a very, very healthy opportunity to take a look at the entire thing with a fresh set of eyes. I should al- also add in that this is one of the best boards that I've been involved with, pension boards. Uh, we have David Becker, we have Bill Gerber, uh, we have a new CFO, Tom Harris, uh, myself, and a couple of other very qualified and capable people. So I think it's a real opportunity to see if we can improve the, um, the, the long-term results of this, uh, this fund.
I look forward to your next report.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate that, uh, you guys will give me till the next report. I hope I have some more details to share.
Thank you. Representative Shea.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Chris Shea, District Two. Um, I have to say, I'm a little bit disappointed in the report that we were supposed to hear tonight on this pension. It didn't seem that there was any preparation, and I was actually really interested in finding out what's going on. Um, and perhaps someone else should have been able to be here to give a report to us in person. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars that are invested to help pay for our employees' pensions, and it's very serious business. And I don't believe that we're doing it very good cause right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other comments? Questions? Um, did someone say asked to be sp-? Someone must have come off me for a minute. Um, any other questions from, who's trying to talk? Okay. Uh, Mr. Brockman? Brockfield?
Yes, yes.
Are you trying to speak?
No, no, I'm just listening.
Oh, okay. All right. Are there any other comments or questions from the body? Representative Pastili.
Uh, Sharon Pastili, District Five. Um, can you, can you refresh my memory? Like, so I know that, I remember the whole, the history of us hiring Vanguard and then them going out of the C I O business. But prior to that, was it our responsibility, um, to balance the assets, or were we paying someone to advise us to do that?
That's a good question. Uh, we've, no, we've had an advisor, uh, for as long as I can remember. Um, we've had several advisors. Uh, we had Vanguard, uh, prior to BlackRock. Uh, we had a group called New England Pension Consultants. Um, we unfortunately had to terminate advisors in the past. We had the Madoff experience, uh, that, that caused us to terminate an advisor. But no, we, we, it would be very, um, difficult, number one, difficult, and irresponsible for a volunteer board that meets on an irregular basis to not have a professional, uh, world-class advisor, uh, got, guiding us towards our investment, uh, selections.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, for you, uh, I, I agree with Representative Shea. I mean, could we table this to next week and he could come, can Mr. Brachfeld come and make this presentation next week?
I was actually going to say, uh.
This is not really.
Yeah. I was, Mr.
With due respect, there's a lot of money we're talking about here, and I think we'd be, we'd be better served if, uh, he was able to make this presentation next week.
I was gonna actually, um, after, after everyone commented, I was actually going to ask Mr. Brockfield, how often does your board meet? And when's the next meeting?
Uh, we meet every two months, and our next meeting is the end of February.
So if, um, do you, do you know the date in February?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Know which the date is in February?
I think it's the twenty, I think it's the twenty-sixth. Is that right, David?
Which is, it's the same time as our, uh, it's after our committee meeting.
It is, and all the twenty twenty-four meetings can be heard on, um, they're all video recorded and sitting on the town's website as well.
Mr. Brockfield, unfortunately, unfortunately, uh, you have a pred- predecessor before you, Carolyn Trubuco, that gave us quite a detailed report. Um, so we, unfortunately, here at our team have very high standards. So, um, I could ask you to maybe come to our March meeting to give us a more thorough report. That'll give you some, uh, time in your position.
The report was supposed to be tonight. It's not being handled properly. Why can't we do it next week at our regular meeting?
What, what date is that? Next week?
Next Monday.
Twenty-seventh.
It's the twenty-seventh.
I, I'd be happy to come. I'll be back in, um, New York, uh, Connecticut on, um, on Sunday.
Great. That would be wonderful. Have a more, uh, detailed presentation for us. That would be, and had the papers in front of you to answer the questions. Um, and yes, go ahead.
We will, we will get, um, Carolyn's, um, format, and we will make sure that that is, um, what we go off of next week when Ken does this. I'll make sure that we assist him in getting that.
Wonderful.
On the same format.
I don't know if you heard that, but Mr. Becker is going to help you in getting the same format that we're, uh, that we've grown to expect from, from your board. Thank you.
Uh, no problem. Sure.
And we'll, we'll see you next week. Thank, thank you. Have a safe trip home.
Okay. I appreciate it. I am sorry. This was an unexpected trip, so it was last minute.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. Take care.
Moving on, um, we'll go to, I see Deputy, Deputy Chief Wyatt in the back. I don't think, uh, Chief Calmaris is here, um, to give us a report on the noise complaints. This is Agenda Item Six. Backup for this item is found on pages thirty to forty-six.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me.
You here in the back.
Um, feel free to ask questions at any point. Um, my, uh, report should be fairly simple, but, uh, I am here to answer whatever questions you may have. So I'll start with the noise report, the noise ordinance report. I'd like to draw your attention to Pages Two and Three, which provide the summary tables and the heat maps. There are minor discrepancies from table to table, depending on how the system codes the data and pulls it when we, uh, generate the report. But the most accurate information that you're going to find is in the lower left table. From this, we see that there were five hundred and three noises incidents reported in twenty twenty-four. Of these, thirty-five electronic infractions were issued, four paper infractions were issued, and six misdemeanor summonses, for a total of forty-five citations, and there was one custodial arrest. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Are there any questions for, uh, Deputy Chief Wyatt regarding the noise complaints? Uh, Representative McDermott.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, for you to, uh, uh, Deputy Chief Wyatt, Mark McDermott, District Nine. Could you define what these no reports, seek cad remarks, advise of complaint? I mean, that takes up the bulk of these five hundred and three, um, complaints.
Well, as you could imagine, there are a lot of noise complaints that we go to that are either unsubstantiated, or it's the officer's determination that the noise is reasonable for the time of day or, or whatever circumstances are surrounding that. Uh, some of the jargon here, like cad remarks, when there's a simpler call that the officers respond to, they may not generate a report. They might just say, make a comment to the dispatcher, and they will add what we call a cad remark, so that there is a record of it, but it's not something that rises to the level of generating a formal report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Representative McCloth.
Megan McCloth. Hi, Deputy Chief, uh, District Two. A quick question. Can you expand a little bit about the one custodial arrest? What is it that's the threshold that rises beyond? What are simple citations and infractions to a custodial arrest so that the body understands?
So something else that you'll see in this report is, um, that some calls that are generated as a noise complaint upon further investigation become something more than a noise complaint. And that would account for that custodial arrest. We may have gotten a call that there was excessive noise someplace. We go there, we investigate, and we find out that there was actually, uh, a possible offense being committed.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the body regarding the noise reports? Representative McCabe.
Okay.
Hi, Michelle McCabe, District Four. Uh, I was wondering, Deputy Chief, is it possible to get the spreadsheets in Excel format versus PDF?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Representative Asturita.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. Ken Asturita, District One. Um, big question because when I, when I see like five hundred and three noise complaints in the town.
Speak a little louder, Ken.
When I see, um, five hundred and three noise complaints in a town this large, it does seem small to me. Maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. But my question is, how much of that is, um, repeat offenders and then repeat, you know, the person who every time they hear is a noise complaint? To, how much would that impact with the actual numbers here?
I mean, I don't have that kind of hard data in front of me, but anecdotally, I can tell you that, yes, um, certain residents would tend to report, report, um, the same incident over and over again. So, you know, we do have, uh, what we would consider frequent flyers. Um, but then there's also just a lot of transient situations that we respond to as well. If you look at the heat map, you'll notice that there are two areas that are the bulk of our complaints. One is a fairly busy business district, and the other is the beach area. And you'll also notice from the heat maps that the majority of the citations that we issue are in the beach area.
Thank you. Any other questions from Representative Steele?
Hi, Jeff Steele, District Three. How, how are you? Um, what have you seen as changes since the noise ordinance was putting this? I, it's not, I, I can't tell necessarily from the date if there's any, any significant.
I wouldn't say significant. I would say complaints are, of enforcement is, of, of your quick comparison to last year. Um, in the twenty twenty-three year, our pool calls were four hundred and twenty-eight versus five hundred and three. Our total citations were twenty-four versus forty-five. Our e-tickets were fifteen versus thirty-five, and our paper infractions were actually a little bit higher, five versus four, and misdemeanor summonses were the same, six and six.
Thank you. Any other questions from the body? Representative McCabe.
Sorry. Michelle McCabe, District Four. Um, this is something that may not be in your records, but something that could be cross-referenced. I'm curious in terms of the property ownership, um, if, uh, you have a way of knowing whether it's a rental property or, you know, a homeowner residential property. Um, you may not have those records. I know that the town might. I'm just curious if you happen to.
We, we don't maintain the records per se, but just from experiencing, going through the calls down there, we very quickly get a feel for what is, like, for instance, college renters versus full-time residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding noise complaints? Seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to recovery of cost report. Um, this is item number seven. It can be found on backup pages forty-seven to fifty. Um, we'll have Deputy Chief Wyatt give a slow report on this.
Shifting to recovery of costs, we have invoiced seven landlords who have received more than one warning letter during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And these invoices account for six hundred and seventy dollars in officer fees that we expect to recover.
Thank you. Are there any que- comments or questions from the body? Uh, seeing none. Uh, thank you. We'll move on to report on blight and condemnation. This is Agenda Item Eight, which can be found.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Deputy Chief Wyatt. Um, I think we have Mr. Mahoney. I thought I saw, he was on Zoom. He's not there. He's not there anymore?
He's there.
Oh, he is there. Okay, great. Great. Mr. Mahoney, um, is on Zoom. He's our chief building official. If you could give us, uh, the report on blight?
Hello, and, uh, thank you for having me here tonight. So I have a short report here on blight. Uh, we have a total of fifty blight complaints, um, thirty-seven of which are closed, one which is pending a demo, five pending inspections, one with a hearing scheduled, and only one that we have is still ongoing and accruing fines.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding blight? Representative Cook-Lipman.
Erica Cook-Lipman, District Two. Um, thank you for being here. I'm wondering if you can tell me when the hearing might be for one twenty-five Stella?
Um, I do not have that. It just, it just has on here scheduled. I can't find that out. And, um, I'll talk to, but I don't, I do not have that date in front of me. I apologize.
That's okay. Um, if I can just follow up, it's, it's because I've heard from several constituents that, um, that live on that street. So it'd be great if I could just let them know what the date is. And if I could just ask a follow-up question, Madam Moderator.
Yes. Um, Mr. Mahoney, if you just want to get that date to me, I can forward it to the body, um, when you're able to, to locate.
Absolutely. I'll, I will look into it tomorrow when I get into work.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Representative Cook-Lipman.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if you can just give me a quick idea of what this hearing will look like, so I could pass that information along as well.
So basically, what we do for the hearing is we sit, uh, and we discuss what the blight complaint is. Uh, we determine if there is in fact enough evidence to proceed. We determine if there is, in fact, enough evidence to proceed with blight. And if it is, we try to, our our one goal is to try to work and, you know, resolve the situation. What what would need to be repaired? Are they going to work with us? And that's our number one goal. We don't want to, you know, force blight fees on anybody. We want to work with them and try to correct the situation and get them back off the blight list.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding blight? Representative Stili?
Um, Sharon Stili, District Five. Um, so two eighty Tuckahoe Lane used to be in my old district before we were redistricted. And that one was like, it had not been inhabited since like nineteen seventy-five-ish. And the owner of the property owned several other properties in town that was the same sort of thing, where like they were just vacant. And I see that there was a lien on it. Um, I was just wondering if you could let us know the status of that one, and then also the other properties that that same person had owned.
Um, I know, I believe, um, Tuckahoe Lane and Graspry Ave, uh, and are owned by the same, uh, person. We do not have, uh, ability or control over that. That would be the town attorney who deals with the collections of liens.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Representative McCabe?
Michelle McCabe, District Four. Uh, can you tell us how many of these properties are commercial, or are they all residential or are any mixed use?
Oh, I could go through this, uh, and I apologize. I don't have that. I basically just have a list of all the addresses, but the majority of them are residential. Uh, there are a few. I see, you know, one post road was just up a lot that, and I believe that came to blight because they had debris on there. They took care of that. But I would say probably ninety-five percent of them are all residential.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding blight? Uh, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. We appreciate that. And you can just get the question about Stella to me. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
You too. Moving on to item, uh, Agenda Item Ten, which is to consider the reappointed, a reappointment of Michael Pasewitz to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. Uh, is Mr. Pasewitz here? Or online? He had told us he would come today. What? Yeah. Um, all right. I don't see, uh, Mr. Pasewitz, so, uh, we'll find out about that. Um, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Eleven, which is the appointments of Christopher Baker and Rose Marie Beretta to the Ethics Commission. Backup for this item can be found on page fifty-seven to seventy. Uh, Mr. Baker, I think, is on Zoom.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Welcome, Mr. Baker. If you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Ethics Commission, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, real quick, uh, intro. Uh, my name is Chris Baker. Moved to Fairfield in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, I've been in law enforcement since, uh, nineteen ninety-six. Both my kids went through the, um, Fairfield Public Schools. And after a decade, um, I thought about how I could, uh, serve the town and use some of my experience. Maybe it would, uh, fit this new commission. So I'm honored to have been selected. It's nice to meet you all. And, uh, yeah, I can answer a question or two, and if not.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Baker? Uh, thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, you look very qualified. Our town clerk will let you know if we need you to show up next week. But we thank you for, uh, wanting to do this. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Um, Ms. Beretta will be here next week, um, for us. Um, she's not able to attend today, but she has committed to next week. Um, moving on to Agenda Item Twelve, which is to appoint, uh, Peter Klein to the Fair TV Commission. Backup for this item can be found on pages seventy-one to eighty. Is Mr. Klein here? Oh, wonderful. You could come on up here, just so you're facing everyone and they can hear you. And if you let us little, know a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Fair TV Commission, that would be great.
Thanks very much. Uh, thanks, everybody. Happy to be here. I'm Pete Klein. Been a resident of Fairfield for approximately fifteen years or so. Had a couple of kids, go through the public school system. Myself, I'm, uh, I've got about thirty years combined of film and television experience. Largely on the performer side, but also as a stunt coordinator, stunt performer. And I really just am, I I saw the, uh, the opening, the open position, the vacant position with the Fair TV Commission. And, uh, it seemed like an interesting opportunity to pursue, to contribute to the community and and just serve the community of Fairfield.
Thank you. And just before anyone asks, I just want to clear up some confusion. On your, um, interest form, it indicated that you were, are, um, but you are, uh, unaffiliated. The Board of Selectmen was aware of that when they voted. Um, they also ran that by attorney peers. And having two Democrats, one Republican, and one unaffiliated on this board or board is okay with the town charter and fulfills that, um, need. Are there any questions for Mr. Klein? Uh, Representative Wolk.
Hi, Jay Wolk, District Five. Can everybody hear me? Uh, first of all, thanks for, uh, offering to be on the commission. I've, since I've been coming on the RTM, I've been involved with the Fair TV for many years on certain things that they've been doing. And so my question to you is, you know, because since the years passed, they've had issues of people showing up. So my question to you is, are you going to show up to the meetings?
Yeah, I mean, I was happy to to be here today to previous, uh, meeting with the selectmen. That is, my interest i- in just volunteering for this was to be a part of it and to learn how the community kind of operates. And if this initial, um, opportunity with Fair TV is is sort of a, um, an introductory, is an introductory, uh, opportunity for me.
And you know, public TV is different than regular TV.
Yeah, sure. I've watched a little Fair TV.
They're governed. Quite different. And Fair TV is governed by the state.
Send the stunt double if you can't make it.
I know a couple of guys.
Anyway, hopefully we'll meet you. Thank you.
Representative Asturita.
Can Asturita, District One. So just a quick question. Were you on the BCT and beat Notre Dame?
Representative McDermott is looking pretty piqued over there, but. Are there any other questions regarding? Regarding his Fair TV appointment? We thank you for waiting through this whole meeting so far.
It's been fascinating to to kind of see how all of this works, so.
Thank you. Our town clerk will let you know if you have to come on Monday, the twenty-seventh. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, we have our Conservation Director, Tim Bishop. I think he's on Zoom. He's supposed to be on Zoom. Um, he was on Zoom. Um, okay. Well, um, I'm going to pass that for now. Um, we're going to move on. I see Mr. Hurley's here, our engineering manager. Um, we're going to ask him to come up and, uh, discuss Agenda Item Fifteen, which is a grant by the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, uh, Connecticut DEEP for improvements in the Rooster River Wat- watershed project. Backup can be found on pages ninety-five to ninety-eight. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Good evening, RTM District reps. I'm Joe Hurley, Fairfield Engineering Manager. And with me in the back there is our new grants manager, uh, Greg Riley. Greg, if you want to just say hello to everybody.
Welcome.
Nice to be with you. The town of Fairfield applied for and was awarded a grant administered by the Connecticut DEP named the Clean Water Act Section Three Nineteen Grant. This grant involves water quality and climate resiliency improvements to the Rooster River watershed. The goal is to reduce non-point source pollution in the Algonquin Villa Avenue neighborhood. The recently purchased, uh, property at one fifty Villa Avenue. The town was, uh, only one of a few municipalities to be selected for this very competitive grant in the state. The side benefit of this, uh, stormwater quality, uh, basins that are being proposed is that they could also act as small neighborhood detention basins as well. The grant covers a portion of the proposed project, which has been presented, listed on the Capital Projects List or Waterfall Chart, and has received approvals from the town boards as part of the Rooster River projects. The project area covers the recently acquired properties at one fifty Villa Avenue and one ninety-one Algonquin Road. The grant award dictated how much Fairfield would receive. Uh, the grant will reimburse the town up to two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. There is a town share of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred for the additional funding that could include in-kind services by town employees, materials, and costs. The costs are considered accurate based on contract bids. However, a few, uh, additional details may have to be addressed or added, um, separating eligible portions of the project, pending any final grant reviews, uh, which we're currently going through with the Connecticut DEP. And this project potentially involves three grants. As stated previously, the project costs, uh, for the grant portion, uh, if you add it up, are four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The state grant reimburses the town, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Town share, as mentioned before, was one eighty-six, nine hundred. That would include some of the in-kind services to lower the quote cash amount of the town share. The remaining funds will come from the Rooster River bond money and a portion of the Urban Act grant that we received, uh, last year. This project developed conceptual conceptual designs and final plan and, uh, has listed on the waterfall chart. It has been scheduled and programmed for construction. Getting the grant reduces some of the project costs to the town. The only additional cost may be, uh, water quality monitoring, if it's required by the grant. So I'm here to answer any questions somebody may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hurley? Representative Georgie Addis.
Who, Georgie Addis, District Nine. Hey, Bill. Did you say this was going to be a three-part program? Will there be additional costs that come through to the town or?
Well, the the two grants right now, the one grant is is a Rooster River grant. It, uh, had covered two point five million dollars, but it it covered a variety of projects. The detention ponds, which we're awaiting Army Corps of Engineers permits for, uh, this, uh, this one. And, uh, potentially removing some sediment of the Rooster River to help conveyance in in the area that constantly gets flooded.
So this money is just.
This is supplemental, supplemental grant. They call it the Three Nineteen administered by the DEEP. The other grant potentially could be, it's sort of a trail network grant. Currently, it's being reviewed, uh, by the Board of Finance.
Okay.
It hasn't come to you guys yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Representative Wolk.
Representative Wolk, District Five. Hi, Bill. Good to see you. Um, so you know how I've been involved in what you've been doing for the, for trying to alleviate the flooding with the, from the Rooster River. So I'm just hearing now that the Corps of Engineers is still, has been, this has been going on for quite some time. So this is stopping the project that we went on a tour down by Tunxus Hill. Took us that time to show us.
That that, yeah, the Tunxus Hill detention area.
Baseball field.
And up by the Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course.
That affects all the homes along the other side of the park.
Yeah, tho- those are the best bang for the bucks. Those detention ponds basically benefit most people in the watershed.
So you, so basically, you're you're caught up, up in, you know, where you said you were going to do the retention centers up by Wheeler and coming down, I think you were talking about.
Yeah, they're they're very close. I mean, they were supposed to, the DEP, I mean, I'm sorry, Army Corps of Engineers were supposed to give us, you know, an answer. We did respond back in, I'm going to say, early fall this year. Then we responded back with some of their, uh, some of their comments. We provided the, that, um, information to address those comments. And we were just waiting. They said middle of December. Then they said, we're not going to get to it to the middle of January. So we had to call into them today even, uh, to follow up. But I know, I know they're really close.
No, you're on top. So thanks for everything.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this? Representative Carroll.
Chris Carroll, District Eight. We said that this is scheduled, but you didn't mention when it's scheduled to be done.
Uh, well, right now, we have put the project out to bid. And the contractor, uh, could start a- as early as February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the one fif- just to be clear, for the one fifty Villa Avenue project.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Uh, thank you, Mr. Hurley. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Um, I see that the, um, Conservation Director, um, Mr. Bishop got online.
Also, Marcy Michael Pasewitz is up. Oh, he came back as well.
Yeah, he's very popular.
Okay. Well, since I already called on Mr., um, Bishop, I'm going to go with Mr. Bishop. So, Mr. Bishop, we're going to move back to Item Fourteen on our agenda, which is regarding a donation of land at one forty Limerick Road. Backup can be found on pages ninety-one to ninety-four. Welcome, Mr. Bishop. If you could just give us a little summary.
Sure, thank you. Uh, sorry, I missed my turn. Uh, I'd been watching up until number four, and my phone died, so I had to get home to get on that. So thank you, uh, for having me, um, out of order. I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, the RTM, this is a, um, a parcel. Uh, it's one and a half acres, mostly wetlands. And, uh, has been donated to us, um, at no cost, uh, or lost to the town. Um, as explained before, planning and zoning commission, uh, originally, this parcel was, um, back in the seventies, originally set aside to be, um, vacant undeveloped land as open space, um, as part of the subdivision that occurred. Uh, this parcel is located east of Mill Plain Road, um, and abuts, um, Shadowwood and, uh, Limerick Roads uh, at the, at the dead ends, uh, which affords access. There's currently no plans or foreseeable plans in the future to, um, have any type of passive or active recreation on the parcel strictly. The, uh, the intent is to just be under the co- jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission for protection of the natural resources at the site. Before tonight's meeting, it's again been approved, uh, for acceptance by Planning and Zoning, um, Conservation and Land Acquisition Commissions, as well as the Board of Selectmen. I'll take any questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Um, we have Mr., uh, Representative Freeman in the back.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Lady Freeman, District Eight. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bishop. So could you just, um, let us know, confirm whether the, uh, the parcel has any access to, uh, a street or road?
It does. It it has it, uh, from both, uh, Shadowwood and, and, um, and Limerick Roads.
And, uh, do you have any insight into, um, the thought process behind, um, making the, the property, uh, from private property into, uh, a town, town property at this time, based, uh, based on the owner's wishes?
Um, the the conveyance didn't, uh, initiate with me. The, actually, um, this came to me through a town attorney. Um, I'm not sure what the rationale is or or how it, uh, how it started. But it is a, a strict, um, strict donation with, uh, you know, again, no costs, um, associated with, I don't believe there's any back taxes or anything like that.
Great. And the last question is, um, what, if any, practical impact is there from the change of this property from, uh, property to town property for the immediate neighbors on Limerick and Shadowwood?
There would be no, no changes. Everything would, uh, remain the same. Um, the only thing I could say is that if, uh, it's, it is, it is, uh, will remain wooded. You know, it's not, it's not, there's no, not going to be a trail in there or a playground or anything like that. It's, it will remain in its natural state.
This is already open space.
Correct.
And wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other questions regarding this property? Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other questions regarding this property requirement? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. We appreciate it. We're going to move, we're going to move back. Mr. Michael Pesewick, I think, is online. This is Agenda Item 10, which is to consider his appointment to the Solid Waste and Recycling, reappointment to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. Backup is on pages 52 to 56. And welcome. If you could just give us a little bit about yourself and why you want to continue on this board or commission?
Yes, again, thank you for letting me join in late. I apologize, a little mix up with the, the meeting agenda. But I've been on the commission for the last, a little over three years now and have an interest in this particular topic. I've enjoyed being a member of the commission and participating with the group. And I just really want to continue for another term in the position.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Pesewick regarding his reappointment? Seeing none. Thank you so much for your commitment. Appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll let you know, the town attorney will let you know if you have to come on Monday. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, lastly, we're going to go to Agenda Item 16, which is regarding amendments to our vehicles and traffic ordinance. We have Representative McCabe here that's going to give us a little presentation on that. This is not a voting item this month, but we will be voting on this item in February as per our rules to regulate. Backup can be found on pages 99 to 147. Thank you, Representative.
So the Connecticut General Assembly passed legislation in 2023 that allows municipalities to use automatic or automated traffic enforcement safety devices, which are cameras that can be used for two types of violations. Either one, running a red light, or two, exceeding the posted speed limit by 10 miles. And this is intended to increase safety. So I want to start, whoa, by thanking the group of co-sponsors. Chris Carroll, Christine Ludwig, Zach, Chris O'Shea, Pierre Ratsy, Dave Rock, and Karen Whackerman, who all worked together on this ordinance. I want to let you know that the ordinance is just the first step in a long process to get any form of camera installed in the town. And some of the rules around this program are, will kick in after the passage of an ordinance. We worked together with the First Selectmen, the Town Attorney, Chief Collin Morris, and Captain Irazari to develop the ordinance. And also, it was based on a model that was provided by the state. So tonight, I'm going to do my best to walk you through the entirety of the process, even the parts that this ordinance doesn't cover, just to give you a sense of what the state statute requires. Chief Collin Morris will be here on Monday to answer any questions that I can't answer or that you prefer that he answer. And I will make note of everything that's asked so that we can share it with the chief before Monday. So the traffic cameras are only allowed in four specific areas of town. And this entire program is overseen by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. They're the ones that make the final decision as to whether or not we are able to install the cameras in the places that we are requesting for them to be installed. So they are allowed at any sort of intersection or traffic light where there's a history of crashes due to failure to stop at a red light or for speed. This particular location has the highest bar to clear in terms of the kind of backup that has to be sent to the Department of Transportation to support the town's request for such a camera. School zones and also pedestrian safety zones are two other areas where these cameras are allowed installation that has a lower bar. You will note in the backup, there is a comprehensive guide for municipalities that outlines what is required in terms of what is submitted to the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And then finally, roadways that are adjacent to a central business district, community center, public parks, hospitals, that also have a history of crashes or incidents and includes written justification. There are other limitations in terms of location. The CT DOT won't approve more than two locations for cameras within a qualified census tract as designated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, nor approve more than one within a QCT that is a quarter of a square mile or less in size. So after the RTM passes an ordinance, the next step is that the Fairfield Traffic Authority needs to develop a plan. The plan needs to have a public hearing. And then from there, it, if it passes, it moves to the Department of Transportation where they then will decide whether or not the cameras can be installed. This is new, so there aren't any installations as of yet. One plan has been approved, and that's with the town of Washington. But a number of municipalities are considering this first step, like we are, which is the passage of the ordinance. The plans are approved for three years, and you're allowed to submit amendments that can alter the location of the cameras. Are there any questions so far?
Are there any questions?
Because there are a lot of parts.
I can't, oh, Representative Georgiades.
Who, Georgiades, District 9. Thank you all for all of your hard work. Writing ordinances is a lot of work, so I appreciate that. As I drive around town and I think about these 10 miles over the speed limit, does the town, and maybe this is a question for First Selectman Gerber. Do they, when was the last time we changed any of our, you know, our speed limits? Do you evaluate the town and think, oh, it's been 25 since 1923, maybe you should go to 35? Or do you just take the town as is? Or is there a, like, reassessment of the current speed limits before you start putting in things like cameras that will tick at you if you go 10, 12, 13?
First Selectman Gerber, do you have the?
You've got to be a bucolic, don't you think?
So.
School zone. I'm not talking school zones.
Yeah, but, okay, so this is just school, school zone.
Well, the police is only school zones. This ordinance is for all over town.
It may be, but it's only going into school zones.
The traffic authority that's going to develop a plan, and I know that it is the intent to start with school zones, but the location of the cameras are not part of the ordinance itself. That is something that's determined later.
So, yeah, the distinction is, I'm sorry, they have gotten approval for only school zones.
Yes, I know that.
So.
But outside of that school zone, which this would apply to.
So we get complaints, many, many, many complaints all the time. We have people go and serve. I mean, this is part of the process of assessing street safety. And, you know, what are the best ways to go about calming people down, you know, calming drivers down and making streets safer? We applied for and were granted a, you know, grant, a federal grant. We put that out to bid, so the RFP is out, and that, this process.
Grant for what?
For, um, street safety. Safe Streets For All grant?
No, no, I know that. I'm just asking about will the town be reevaluated?
The town, part, the grant is to evaluate every street in town for safety using whatever technology is available, the most advanced technology. So the goal is to evaluate every street and determine which ones are higher priority to put traffic, traffic calming measures in and, you know.
Does that also include evaluating the current speed limit?
Well, it'll, probably, I mean, we, yes, I mean, it'll, it'll evaluate the current speeds for sure. I mean, people aren't adhering to the speed limits, which is a big problem. We could park.
You could say that's because the speed limit is unrealistic, or you could say that because people are in a hurry. I'm just, you know, how do you determine what the speed limit should be? You know, the speed limit should be reasonable. Anyway, I just.
Well, the, the process to date has been, people complain about speeds, you know, hey, my kid was trying to cross and almost got run over. And you get all, all of these complaints.
Those are the same people that go through.
Representative Georgiades. Anyway, I would like to know if the speed limits are going to be evaluated. That's my question.
I mean, that's part, that's part of this whole town process. They will be evaluated. The speeds will be evaluated and the speed limits. But in general, I doubt there's appetite to put 20 miles per hour speed limits all over town. But we, we, you know, if, if that's what they come back.
I'll ask you to just take this speed limit conversation off the line. Thank you. Are there any other comments regarding this? Representative Shea?
Yes, hi. Thanks, Madam Moderator. And I thank you all for your work on this. I'm a little concerned anytime I hear that the state of Connecticut is kind of like overseeing stuff and is kind of in charge of where we put cameras. And I just worry about us giving up any of our, you know, authority to, you know, a big government jurisdiction. And I'm wondering if, if you've had any discussions about that.
Thank you. I actually had looked at some research to see what was done nationally. And it appears that actually it is through state legislatures that the ability of a municipality to use these cameras seems to go through. I will remind myself where I found that because I remember at the moment, but I know I saw it, and I will send it to you. But it's not unusual, it seems. Some states don't allow them at all. So I believe that Connecticut is following other states in how they, they do this. But I will find that information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Carson. Representative Carson.
Laura Carson, District 4. Will, we, so for the infractions, for the speeding or going through a red light, we as a town will get the full of money for that?
So the way that the, we're kind of skipping ahead a little bit, I know because you're so interested in where we're going with this. So the way that the violations work, I'm going to back into that if you don't mind. So the cameras themselves, we are permitted, as you'll see in the ordinance, it's written in Section 102-7 about vendors. The town is, according to ordinance, permitted to enter into a contract with the vendor. So there are basically three ways to get cameras. And this ordinance is not going to be able, and me and, and all of us in preparing it, we can't tell you how much this is going to cost. That is for, you know, the, the town, the traffic authority to price out. But there are three options. One, you can buy the cameras outright and operate the whole system internally. So the way it works is you have the cameras installed. There are requirements as to signage, what they look like, where they go. The first 30 days of enacting the cameras. Those who exceed the speed limit or run a red light, they get a written warning and they don't get fined. But then after those 30 days, they get fined. So the, and, and then they get in the mail. It looks like the tolls, if any of you do toll by mail, it looks very similar to that. You get a photograph, a video that shows your car. It explains when it was, what the violation was. The violation is like getting a parking ticket. It's not points on your license. It's not, you know, depending on how fast you're going is how much you pay. The violation is set at $55 for your first offense, $75 for any subsequent offenses. The cameras are calibrated so that, for example, in a school zone, as you know, the speed limit changes based on whether there, the school is in session. And the cameras recalibrate depending on the time of day. So if we were to buy cameras and manage it, we'd have to do all of the mailing, the processing, all of that. Second option is you can rent cameras and the vendors handle that processing piece of it. Third option is I, you can buy the cameras and the vendor can manage the processing, et cetera. Folks will get a violation notice in the mail that's branded Fairfield Police Department. Those violations have to be reviewed by a town employee, a sworn member of the traffic authority, police officer. It's not the vendor who decides whether or not someone gets a fine. The vendor sends to this designated person, you know, the list and the, the, the images, the video of the offenders, and that person has to review it to decide. And then they get, then they approve whether or not someone gets violated, gets a violation. There is a cap of $15 per violation as a processing fee to cover the cost of, you know, rentals of the camera, whatever you pay the vendor to do the processing, et cetera, for you. Whether or not all this gets covered with the combined cost of the ticket and the processing fee, I do not know the answer to that. And I imagine that would be revealed in the bidding process once, if this goes far enough for that to happen. I don't know if there are any questions about the vendors and the violations.
Representative McCleod.
Megan McCleod, District 2. Is there an appeal or contesting process that would be managed by the vendor or simply by the traffic authority or combination of both?
There is an appeal process, and it is located in the ordinance. Section 102-12 is the citation hearing. It is not handled by the vendor. It is handled by the traffic authority. And if you look at the language, you can see what the process is in terms of the timing of sending the violation, the timing of an appeal, and who, who handles all of that.
Thank you.
All of the recordings that are picked up by the cameras, one cannot be used for anything other than this explicit purpose. So if you happen to exceed the speed limit and have an illegal ski rack on your car, it doesn't matter. They're, you cannot, and they're destroyed after, after use. So they are not to be used for anything other than this. And if you look at Section 102-13 of the ordinance, it explains exactly what the process is in terms of protecting personally identified information.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this? Representative Asturita?
Yeah, and Asturita, District 1. Thanks, Michelle. Just a couple of things I just want to make sure I clarify. The, the intent of this is to be able to put cameras in a couple of different schools, correct?
The purpose of this is to give the town the ability to create a plan as to where they would request cameras from the state DOT to go through a process that includes a public hearing and to submit that plan to the state. I have, we've been told by the administration and by the Fairfield Police that their interest is to start with school zones. And that is their intent, but it is not this ordinance that dictates the locations that are under consideration.
Okay, so that's one of the things I wanted to make sure I understood. So, so by passing this ordinance, then it could potentially open it up to other places throughout the town. Now, my question is, because you, you had referenced selecting those other places. It would seem that there's some criteria that, that needs to be passed. Can you just give a sense of like what that is?
Yes, if you give me a second, I'll look in the backup. Okay, page one oh nine is where it starts and. Okay, so if you start at one point two, requirements for all locations, you'll see that in all the potential locations that I listed. Right? You need a written justification and a scaled roadway plan or an aerial image showing the location. And any of those four spots that I told you were allowable. Okay, that's the first step. Then, if you go down to one point three, requirements by location type, then you will see all the documentation that has to be submitted by the town in an effort to get a location approved. So you'll notice that the first one, traffic control signal, has actually a lot of required documentation. That is going to include, for example, at least two crashes over a three-year period where an operator failed to stop at a traffic, a red traffic signal indication. And then it, it goes from there. I don't think you want me to read all of them. But the next several pages, you'll see every one of those four potential locations. You'll see the checklist of everything that has to get submitted. So in other words, we can pass this ordinance, the traffic authority can identify a spot. The public can weigh in on it and everyone thinks it's awesome. The town gathers information and submits it and DOT says, no, that's not enough. You're missing X, Y, and Z, or there's this one, you know, piece of information missing or whatever it might be.
So, so, so the town goes to the Department of Transportation with the locations that it wants to assign the cameras. However, the Department of Transportation has the ultimate say on whether those locations can be.
Correct. And then there's also, you'll see in this document, a reporting requirement subsequent to being allowed to and putting in these cameras that, that is required.
Now, now can the Department of Transportation come to the town and say you have to put a camera in X, Y, and Z location? Okay.
They cannot. It is strictly the town's decision as to where and how many cameras they want to install. And it's the DOT's decision whether or not to approve. I'm imagining that with the reporting requirement, I don't know if there's an opportunity, if the cameras have been installed for them to come back and say something. I don't know the answer to that.
So just a thought occurred to me, and this, and this jives with what Representative Georgiades, what I think she was actually going at here. Is there an evaluation on a location to make a determination whether the, like the speed limit in that area is justified? Because I, I think Drew, that's probably what you were, what you were driving at. Is that, is that part of the evaluation?
That's actually a great question that Representative Ludwig Zach had asked. There has not, as far as I know, been a formal study that has been conducted in the school zones. And it isn't required as part of this request. Unlike the traffic signal one, which I told you, like, you need to have a certain number of crashes, et cetera. Think the assumption being that school zones are a highly concerning area. Anecdotally, I've been told by the chief that they could issue tickets all day at a school zone for drivers that are going over the posted speed limit. It's, I, I will say again, and not as part of the ordinance necessarily, but certainly, I mean, a good question in terms of whether there's a, a belief that there's, that should be a requirement. But the state doesn't require some kind of study done.
So it's whatever, it's whatever the town commission, well.
For a school zone. The red light one requires data.
Right, but I also assume it would, it would go to, you know, some of like these pedestrian areas as well, right, that you, that you mentioned. So, but the, the bottom line is there's, there is no evaluation on speeds within the areas that, that we're looking at here.
It can. I mean, it says here additional information if available. This is for a pedestrian, this is for a school zone or a pedestrian zone. May include recommendations from a road safety assessment, findings from a speed study, and how other speed reduction measures are not feasible or have not been effective.
But is, is that a mandatory part of the process or that's, that's an optional?
I think First Secretary McGurber might have an answer.
I understand your questions, both yours and Drew's. You want to know that if people are speeding and the reason they're speeding is the, is the speed limit is too low as opposed, and they're not really at fault because it's unreasonable to have such a low speed limit. That's, that is part of a typical evaluation by the local traffic authority. So if people come in and complain, they would get on the traffic, the local traffic authority, you know, and, and they would complain about that. We've had, you know, we, we've had instances, I think there was one near Ward, was it? Where residents wanted to lower the speed limit because they said people were speeding. And the state, it was state road, like they came in.
That was Wilson Street.
Wilson, yeah, and they came in and said, no, it, it's got to stay at what, fifty?
No, it was like thirty or five.
Thirty-five, forty, or, yeah, I can't remember, but I remember everyone was really disappointed. But there is a process for.
But is that, so, but is that, is that process connected with this process? Because I, because I think, you, you know, what potentially is happening here is, you know, we're going to put cameras in. And we're thinking about putting cameras in. We're going to start hitting people for speeding in these designated areas that we've decided. But again, before we put those cameras in, have we done an evaluation to make sure that the speed that we're requiring in that zone is justifiable?
Well.
And maybe, and maybe, you know, it's, I, but maybe it should be thirty. I, you know, I don't know, but is that part of the process here?
I mean, that's usually part of the discussion when they talk about, you know, putting speed limits in. And if people complain about, you know, about getting, I mean, right now it's hypothetical because we're not planning on putting any of these in. Let's say a cop, you know, stations their car on a corner in a twenty-five mile an hour zone near McKinley. And some people there, you know, and they're all twenty-five mile per hour zones and, or, or in another area, not near a school. And they just start ticketing everybody, you know. And the, people will complain to the, the local traffic authority, which currently is the police commission for now. And, you know, they, they can assess the, you know, they, they can assess whether twenty-five miles an hour should be thirty or thirty-five.
Right, and.
But is it required or?
Well, because, because this is my concern. I'll just be honest, like, we, we do this, right? We're kind of like crossing the line. Okay, we put in the first camera, then that sort of opens a door to other cameras in other parts of the town. My concern is, and I think this is what the point Drew was making, you know, we've probably had speed limits that, for like thirty or forty years, nobody's looked at them. Well, have, have we, have we done that?
Like seventy.
Right. So before we start putting in cameras to ticket people, have we done an evaluation like that to make sure that, that the speed limits are what they actually should be? Or have we at least incorporated as part of this process, an evaluation of that to make sure that that is done? That's, you know.
Well, the, the way the process currently works is people will complain if people are speeding, not because they're speeding, but because there's something dangerous happening. You know, like their kid, you know, is walking to school, almost got hit, or, you know, things like that. We get, you know, hundreds of those complaints. Then, you know, we'd ask them to log, log it, and it would end up going to the police commission. They go out and they observe, you know, the situation. And if they don't believe, if they, you know, the, the local traffic authority in some instances, you know, has the ability to, you know, change the speed limit. The, the local traffic authority doesn't, they're not like looking to generate revenue because we actually, you know what I mean? So, so it's part of the process. Like, this is all part of the process. So if we want to slow.
I was trying to say, and I think Ken and I agree, is that I, I've worked with the police commission. I've said, go out at three o'clock and see if there, we need to stop sign here. And they go out at nine AM. So we have solved that problem by making.
I think, I think this is a little off topic, so if you guys could take it like offline, because she's telling me.
I can tell you why.
But the town.
Because the ordinance covers whatever the speed limit is. So the point is, is that you're really considering how comfortable you are with people being ticketed through the use of a camera. Because you may find, let's say, that whatever the posted speed limit for school zones is too low, everybody decides to raise it by five miles. It doesn't change anything because all it means is that people can go that five miles faster, but they're still going.
No, I disagree.
They're still going to get ticketed based on the posted speed limit. So what you might be thinking about is, are, are, is the concern that a camera is going someplace where the.
What, what I am concerned with is that you could, you could have, let's say, a twenty-five mile an hour zone. And a lot of people will go through that zone at, you know, thirty-five, thirty-six miles an hour. But in reality, the, the, the speed through that, that zone should either be like, say, thirty or like thirty-five. Okay, so there, there is, there is a difference.
But it, the only difference, the difference has, doesn't have to do with the camera. The difference has to do with what you feel is an appropriate posted speed limit.
Right, but.
Unless you're making.
Cameras picking that up, though. That's the thing, the camera is picking up.
The question is, does the town ever evaluate? I know what my question is.
Do you think that ten miles over the speed limit is not generous enough for a traffic camera? Because if you change the posted speed limit, the violation is ten miles over whatever that posted speed limit is, whether it's raised, whether it's lowered.
All right, I'll, I'll, for.
Representative McGurber, our Pre-Selectee McGurber is reciting the answers.
I don't think there's an answer to your question because there's no magic formula for what a speed limit should be. Like, just because everyone's going thirty-five or forty doesn't mean the speed limit should be thirty-five.
I agree, but if these, if these were all.
So evaluating, evaluating it usually, usually for us comes with a complaint. So we, you know, going around, there's no way we could really go around to every street in town and saying, we, there's no way you can go around to every street in town.
I think this is off topic just because we're talking about the camera versus the speed. So I'm going to let you guys take that offline, or you can ask separately for that. I'm going to move on. I think Representative Steele had to say that.
I just had a question. Jeff Steele, District Three, just taking like a, a more macro look at this. And I did not attend the December meeting. I was traveling, so I missed your first presentation.
No, this is the first.
No, it's L and A.
Oh, T L and A, sorry.
So obviously, when we put an ordinance in place for anything, there's usually something that, that pops it. And I, I think in this case, obviously, it's speeding around town. People don't like speeding. Probably happens in virtually every town in Connecticut. Washington obviously took some action. This is a pretty, you know, significant step to take, right? Has witnessed that one out of, what do we have, one hundred and sixty-two towns, sixty-five towns?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine towns. What, so, again, I don't, I don't know if it was all calls and complaints. And I know there have been some, or has it been a number of skating tickets, whatever, the metric that was hit that make us go to that, that, that distance. So my question is, with other speed limiting measures like, you know, that we all know of and that are used around town, whether it's a stop sign or a light or a radar gun or police presence or a speed bump, it seems like any of those options would also help in this case if they haven't been implemented already. And so why do we necessarily jump to that, to that length versus trying some of these other speed limiting measures? And certainly a speed bump, no one's going through that too fast. Like, I, I'm just wondering why those different measures, why they aren't implemented in these problem areas. And then the second question or part of this all is, where are those problem areas? And I know there's complaints around town, but generally, where are we looking to target this? Is it, is it the schools? Are there other pedestrian areas, which makes sense? But like, there has to be, I would think, as you think through this, sort of a priority list of where are the problem areas in town? And can we address those problem areas with some of these other measures, such as having a police car? If someone said today that their tickets could be given all day at a, at a school zone, well, get tickets all day. I, I, I think that would stop people if, if there was police presence there. No one, no one's going to speed. They know, they know a speed camera's there. They know a police is going to be there fairly randomly, but frequently enough, aren't going to speed. And there are other measures, that's just one. I like the digital boards that tell you what the speed, like, gee, I didn't realize, oh, I can slow down. That is, we, we, it's a visible way of seeing how fast you're going. I think it's quite effective. But it just seems there are other effective things that we don't need to go to the camera, uh, point yet or maybe ever, but certainly right now. That's just my concern.
Okay, so I'll start by saying that since this state statute was passed, we actually were approached by Fairfield Police. They're very interested in seeing this passed. And they, as First Secretary McGurber has stated, have actually gone through the process of having the school zones designated as sort of a precursor step to be able to get to this point. So just as a point of reference, it was not sort of an RTM-driven sort of, which sometimes it is. But this is not the case for this ordinance. And they've been instrumental in helping us to actually work through this and answering a lot of questions. You'll notice in the backup, there's an FAQ that was created thanks to the great questions by the co-sponsors to Chief Calamaris, which I compiled so that you could see what his answers were to the questions. And like I said, he'll be here next week to answer it more directly. But from my conversations with him, having a police officer present, that is a huge expense for the town. And I imagine that they are more interested in deploying their officers in other ways. There are certain parts of town, like Mill Plain Road, where Riverfield School is, where speed bumps are not an appropriate thing to install. I'm not a road engineer nor a traffic engineer. And so I imagine, again, that's the beauty of now having, you know, a new traffic authority that is actually composed of all of the experts in town that can be able to look at, to your point, the entire suite of options that are available. And in fact, according to the statute, you know, certainly at an intersection with a traffic lane, the statute states you've had to try everything before you do this. There's also data from other states that I can send that I thought I had in the backup, but I may not have. That show that the, the cameras work. They do deter people from speeding, from running red lights, which is something that we want. So I think that's a great question to pose specifically to Chief Calamaris, who give you an indication of why they've decided that the school zones are a really important place for these and why it makes more sense to have a camera versus an officer. So I'll, I will let him feel that, but that's the information that I have so far.
Okay, I, I just, and my only response, comment versus question is, you know, if we are looking at really trying to regulate speed at the school zones, and that, that is one thing. And I think we all agree that, that needs to be addressed. And around town, the same thing, but maybe not to the level of the schools. And are there different methods and, and, and tools we can use? So it, it seems very wide.
Clarify one thing. It's, the, the plan that the traffic authority is going to present is not going to be a blanket, you know, we're going to put them wherever. They're going to have to present to you, you know, the location where we're going to put the cameras. And so there's an opportunity for the public to say, we like it here, we don't like it there. We feel comfortable with it here, we don't feel comfortable with it there. And so then the final decision on what is the plan that's going to be submitted to the state is going to contain what is comfortable and makes sense for Fairfield based on the reporting of the traffic authority. So my point is that this passage of the ordinance does not mean that the RTM has given a carte blanche blessing to covering the whole town with cameras. They give me the opportunity for the traffic authority basically to make the case. And then the process, if they do, and if it's approved, by which we are allowed to find and what that looks like.
First Secretary McGurber, did you have something to add to that?
I just want to reiterate, this is driven by the police. They asked, they, they've wanted to do this for some time. And the, the reason is that they don't have enough police to, to manage this. So we don't have a huge, you know, traffic division. We could hire fifty, you know, traffic cops and put them everywhere they need, and then they could write tickets all day. And they probably would pay for themselves, but that's not, that's not how we're set up. So if we have, you know, a few, few traffic cops out. So if we have, you know, a few few traffic cops out, they wouldn't be able to cover even the schools. Let alone all the other locations where people are complaining. And it's not like a few complaints here and there. This is by far the single largest, that we get hundreds of complaints. We never get a complaint that this that, you know, I mean, someday there might be a complaint that the speed limit's too low, but it's typically, you know. My kid almost got run over, my father almost got run over, that kind of thing. And, you know, um, one of the things that, the other things that you wanna try, I mean, that's. That's what the Complete Streets Ordinance actually is. It's trying other things, like curb bump outs and speed tables. We're looking to put a speed table in on South Benson Road. Um, and that should hopefully slow people down as well. So it's part of a comprehensive plan, but we don't have enough cops to to do, you know, wh- what needs to be done, at least in the school, even in the school district. So we we have eighteen schools. I think we're we're we have approval now to do what, six locations, I believe? Um, so I mean, it's gonna be a while before we even can cover the schools.
Thank you. I just wanna say to the body, I I do have like five or six of you written down. I am seeing your hands. I thank Representative Colburn, if you still have a question, this next.
You can skip me.
Okay, Representative Walk.
Jay Walk, District Five. Um, thank you, Michelle, for doing this. Um, it's really important what you're doing. Um, just to reiterate a little bit about what just Bill just said about doing things other than putting speed bumps in. Um, jutting sidewalks out do work. They, Bill Hurley did that for us down by Stratfield School. Coming down Fairfield Woods, doing eighty miles an hour and coming around the bend onto Melville. And I I I questioned, I asked then-Chief Matt American, we put speed bumps in and and he suggested they. They don't like putting speed bumps in, but what they did is they jutted out the 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 sidewalk. And that stopped people from coming around, doing eighty miles an hour around the turn. Um, the other thing is, you were mentioning, Michelle, you know, like, and everybody else is talking about raising, you know, maybe we should look into changing speed limits. Well, thirty miles an hour, nobody's really doing thirty miles an hour in this town. Nobody's doing twenty-five miles an hour in this town. It's like lawless. This is what I've been witnessing since I've lived here over twenty years. The just to say that the speed cameras do work, my son got caught in Washington DC speeding. Okay, and got it, got that in the mail. We paid it. It doesn't go on, it doesn't go on your license because you're out of town, you know, out of state. But it it's a deterrent. It's, I saw cameras already up down by by King's Highway over by. By um by Town Fair Tire. Um, there's a camera, I think, over those new cameras. Somewhere in town, I saw the the cameras now. I think it's, it may even be down where Stratfield, you know, where the where the new intersection is in Stratfield. Um, but but people, people have been going through red lights. Now that they know there's a camera on top, that stops people from going through red lights, you know, it's good for the most part. So anyway, I think it's a good idea, especially down by the schools. Um, we should start by doing it there and then see how it goes from there.
Thank you, Representative Walk. Uh, Representative Shay, did you still have a comment or question? All right, Representative Hort, uh Horton.
Uh, Margaret Horton, District Ten. Just I, most of my points, I think, have been covered. I think um if everybody takes time to read through like the location selection and justification, it does seem pretty stringent. So I really do get the sense that um if other methods for street calming and street safety would work in those locations. Then the DOT is not going to approve the cameras. And so I think that it's important to remember that this is really, DOT is saying yes when other measures are not going to affect.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Hartigan?
Mike Hartigan, District Three. Um. If I'm understanding correctly, the vendor will send the information to a member of the traffic authority. Will review it to determine if there's an infraction. And they're going to be determining that based on these outlined defenses, not using uh like discretion, for example. The defenses outlined are essentially, you're driving an ambulance or the traffic light's not working, the camera's malfunctioning. But a police officer might not issue a ticket based on discretion. Is that? Is that what the traffic authority, when it says they're reviewing it, is that what they're taking into consideration?
That's a great question. I know that the state statute has a requirement that the person who's designated. Gets trained. In reading the video, reading the images, but I don't know more detail about that, and I can try to get some. I assume that there is an element of discretion, perhaps the person looking at it, if it's, you know. Twenty-five mile an hour speed limit and they go thirty-six, they may. Not issue a violation to that person, but using their discretion. More like thirty-nine, but that's a good question. I mean, at the end of the day, a human being is reviewing the tapes. And a human being is making the decision, and that human being is being trained. And the human being might be a police officer, but it might be another town.
But under the ordinance, are we permitting the person reviewing?
Ordinance does.
Any defense other than what's outlined?
The defenses is uh, let me look at what the. Is it not the defense of the person who's disputing the violation and not the defense of the person who's deciding whether they violated?
I'm asking whether or not the person reviewing it is only looking to see, does it meet these five criteria? If it doesn't, then no, you have no defense.
There isn't anything in the ordinance that specifically spells out what the person reviewing the tape is doing. Other than if they go ten miles over the speed limit or run a traffic light, then they have the the purview to issue a violation. Um, so, but to your question, I will ask. What the training is that the operator has to undergo so that your question will be answered?
Because I have a second. Um. Under the area regarding, I'm struggling to find it now, under the area regarding uh data collection. It says that no personally identifiable information will be given by the vendor. Um, to anybody other than the town. But we all know a lot of these data collection companies don't need your personally identifiable information to acquire a lot of the data they're looking for. They can get that off an algorithm. Is there anything preventing the vendor from setting up a camera that's just constantly collecting data? And then using that bulk data to provide, to figure out. Information about you, like Facebook, for example, has shadow accounts for people that don't have a Facebook profile. They can figure all that out through secondary data. Is there anything preventing the vendor from anything like that?
Um, I can, as can you, review what the privacy requirements are. And I will also ask that question, have it answered for you on Monday.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Donnie, you have a question online?
Hi, thanks, Michelle. Thanks for all your work. Just real quick, I'm sorry, I don't have access to the information. Um, how long are the images kept and are the images of only the offenders? So in other words, do they have long-term um videos and they're storing them?
Um, I do know that the cameras are only um. Turned on. They only capture images of violations. It's not. It's on all the time and then people are reviewing every single car that goes. It because they're calibrated specifically. So much like a toll, it takes a picture when you run a red light or you go ten miles over the speed limit. And then it snaps your picture. It has a time date on it. Video and you see exactly the moment that happens and what the speed was that you were going and all of that. And that's the information that you also have to contest the violation. I don't know how long the images are available before they are destroyed, so I will find that out.
That's okay, Michelle. My my other concern, my other thing was, can we solve other crimes with it like they do on TV?
You absolutely cannot. It's expressly uh written in the ordinance. That the images captured by the camera can only be used for violations of going over the speed limit. By ten miles or running a red light. So again.
The people they capture are criminals, right? That, you know, coincides. Who knows? All right, thank you.
Certainly would never suggest that I ever go to over ten miles over the speed limit, so I'm not a criminal.
Thank you. I see that Representative McCleod does have a question, but she's already asked, is there?
I think Representative Ludwigs.
Oh, I'm not looking back there. Representative Ludwigs, thank you.
Um, thank you, Christine Ludwigsak, District Eight. Um, I just wanted to, I did have one question, actually, and then I had something to mention. For the site locations, um, will they come back around to the RTM for approval? Um, once this ordinance is approved?
No, no, it's my understanding is it goes through the traffic authority at that point. And it does not come back to us to approve.
Okay, um, I guess with um that understanding, I I definitely understand the concern about uh like a blanket approval of cameras in town with this ordinance. Um, and with First Secretary McGurber mentioning having like more comprehensive of plan for safe streets with utilizing different options. Would we maybe be able to look into including some language in the ordinance that, to the extent that would require us to do. Certain studies um or have certain elements in place, some of the more um conservative measures before we do a camera. Um, just to kind of have the camera as maybe a last last-dish effort. Um, or something that we could just make sure we take all our measures before we include that. Um, I think some of the other, uh, some of my colleagues were mentioning that would be a a concern or that the state of Connecticut might require it. But if they don't require it, maybe we can't. In our language.
Um, definitely, I think.
We could explore that.
Yeah, I think it's again, a good question um for Monday. Mostly the question that I would have in terms of what that would look like. Um, similar to the more stringent location of a traffic light with the camera. Um, where you need crash data and other things. Um, I mean, certainly, it says in the language of the statute that, you know, your case will be stronger to get it approved. If you have studies, speed studies, et cetera. If you wanna make it a requirement. And then it's a question two of. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how deeply the RTM wants to get involved in what the study design looks like.
I maybe I'm using the wrong terminology, maybe not the study as much as, this is a determined problem area. What measures do we take to defer speeding before we put the camera in? Like a radar speed sign, a speed bump, um, you know, whatever, whatever means we might have in our, um, you know, at our disposal. Of like before we put the camera um to make sure we cover all our bases.
Um.
State doesn't require.
I I'm assuming that that's the process by which, you know, it's the traffic authority. That's going to be creating a plan that requires public input. And um, I don't know, Bill, maybe you can answer this question. Um, the process by which the traffic authority votes yes or no to do something? Do they operate similar to, say, the RTM where, let's say, we pass the ordinance? And let's say then it goes to the traffic authority. The traffic authority, which includes the police, determine that the plan they're gonna submit to the state. Let's say are at six of our schools in the school zone. They create the plan. It, I assume it's made public. I assume there's a public hearing. And then the traffic authority votes to approve the plan that gets sent to the state? I mean, is it, does it work like that? Does somebody on the traffic authority, like, let's say it's Chief Calamaris? And he, the traffic authority is comprised of a bunch of different people, not just police representation, including public members. I'm assuming he would present the plan to the traffic authority. We want to go to the state. We're asking for these school zone cameras. There's public discussion presumably, and then the Fairfield Traffic Authority votes. And if they vote it down, then they have to go back to the drawing board. And if they vote to approve, it gets sent to the DOT, then they decide whether or not. Is that, is that a process?
The way it works, it's always, the way it's always worked, like, the the traffic authority, the the police commission as traffic authority. Um, voted on lowering, you know, the speed limits to twenty from twenty-five in the school districts. And um, I thought they already voted on the cameras at those six schools, right? So I I think those have already been approved.
I guess maybe that's where, like, my initial thought is just, I know we have, I think, Chief Calamaris, one of your questions or our questions, where we're about the radar speed signs. We have, I think, five in town. So if we're gonna put six cameras at these school zones, could we first trial something?
But we we do, we we do. Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, like, for example, you know. Like at Riverfield, we've tried every, we've tried a lot, you know. There there's, there's a a lot of money you could spend to try to slow people down with, you know, it's a lot of concrete and uh asphalt. And we are gonna put some of those things in, but the things that we've, that the the police have tried, haven't done the job. So they do tip, I mean, the whole process has been identify the problem, usually with complaints, always with complaints. Um, try to slow people down using different measures, putting a crosswalk in, putting us, you know, signs up and changing signs. And, you know, and they just haven't worked like on Millplain.
So then maybe, um, yeah, I guess I'm, maybe I'm back back up asking that. Do you see that those measures were taken before we put a camera in? So whether whether it's called a study or just that kind of.
That would be part, I mean, those discussions are had at the at the local traffic authority and, you know, police commission up till now. They have those discussions. We've tried this, we've tried this. I mean, and they, they're constantly trying things. And Bill Hurley and Megha Jane are trying to get, you know, them to approve different things to do. Um, and they would only move on to the next if the less, you know, expensive things.
Yeah, so I I guess maybe I'm, what I'm asking is that we could include that language in the ordinance that we've exhausted those options. And it sounds like we already do that, so it's um redundant, but that would.
Just as a reminder that when we consider this in February, amendments can be made on the floor. Do you think that the RTM should decide? I mean. You know, I don't know. I I would imagine, I mean, then that's something to consider. Or if you entrust the traffic authority to make the right decision based on their data. Um, or to add a a requirement that, you know, sites need to have a speed study or whatever. But there are considerations that can be made to to persuade the body to change. And good questions for the chief. On Monday, just to get a sense from him why these particular areas, they felt like this was a really good. Tool to add to the toolbox for the schools. Thank you. There are questions to ask.
Thank you, Representative Carroll.
Yeah, Chris Carroll, District Eight, forgot by now. Um, if I wouldn't give myself a headache, I'd be banging my head on the table. Three points. It's the law. And and we're sitting here saying, yeah, it's a law, but maybe it's not a good law to enforce. Let's go enforce bank robbers, you know. It's the law. The fact of the matter is Fairfield has this speed limit question. Fairfield's population has gone up twenty percent in the last fifty years. More people, more cars. I don't know that there's a lot of new roads, so there's more people and more cars on the same amount of roads. I find that amazing. Bikers, on average, in urban areas, has increased sixty-four percent. I I I'm pretty sure that's what it is since two thousand nine, or nineteen ninety to two thousand ten. So sixty-four percent more people are biking. Cars are significantly larger and more harmful. Children are no more resilient. So the idea that maybe we speed up a little bit, kids will be fine, you know? Cause the cars are bigger, people are on bikes, it doesn't matter. I I just find it, I I didn't wanna say this, but I just think it's nuts. And and to the the whole conversation. And finally, I get more conversation from constituents. Coming to me, we've had some neighborhood meetings already, that, you know, Millplain, um, Enqua there. Sturgis, it's just out of control. I I think kids are now using the little speed thing to see how fast they can go. Because it's amazing. Because it's amazing the amount of people, this isn't mine, seeing people going fifty in the twenty-five zone. So I suppose they'll still get a ticket if we raise it to thirty-five, but it's it's just the whole thing is nuts. Um, and and I'm I'm sorry, it's an emotional thing, I have small kids, I run, I bike. People are driving too fast, and if you break the law, you get a ticket, you get arrested. That's and this idea, well, maybe we could do it some other way. I I just firmly disagree with it, sorry, I had to, I sat here too long listening to this, so thank you.
Thank you, are there any other first comments from the body? I'm going to go with Megan, Representative McClellan.
Megan McClellan, District Two, just for the record, I didn't ask a question on this one yet, but now that I am the last one, unfortunately, you all have to hear a lot of questions I have now because I compiled a bunch. Um, but going, I'm I'm honest, I'm transparent, going back to Drew's original question, um, which I think we went around whether or not we could have an answer. But I think we did establish and First Suck McGurber did a good job establishing that the jurisdiction to decide if there's going to be a traffic study is within the Fairfield Traffic Authority. So this ordinance really doesn't touch that and we do these traffic studies, I think, based on complaints. And I can speak not only for my district, from personal experience, I was very involved in the traffic study that led to the Reading Road roundabout as a result of having to get Osta get involved and all have worked very closely with the Police Commission and the Engineering Department. Um, it's a, it's a pretty prescribed process, but it's outside the jurisdiction of anything I think we could do in an ordinance because it rests in the traffic authority. So if they decide to do a traffic study, they they do, I know because we went through it on Reading Road. They do look at the speed limit and that's part of their analysis. And whether it's historically in tune with the vehicles they use, they look at all kinds of uh really actually amazing projections of, you know, the angles and all these things, it's really, it's really in depth when they do it. I think the question of whether or not we can ask them to look into that is a little bit outside the scope of this ordinance because it rests in the local traffic authority, so I I do think that we should confirm that with Chief Calamares because I think that would alleviate a lot of concerns. Um, a couple of concerns, well, before I get to the concerns, I guess what I'd like to say is I I want to echo something that First Suck McGurber said, which is that the police brought this to the attention of the fact that we do not live in an area that has the um privilege of having a surplus of police officers. We live in a state where we have a hard time recruiting officers on the line of duty and the the bandwidth is is slim. So the fact that our police officers came to us with this, I think, is something that this body should consider, is obviously a need that they see, they're experts in this field. Um, that being said, I also do share concerns, um, as the former representative mentioned, that what I see is a ten mile per hour over queues this camera. Well, what if we have the you-know-what going fifty miles per hour over and they're going to get the same violation? You know, that doesn't replace the need for enforcement. But I think the concept that we're using a deterring method, even though it's by way and means of enforcement, it's really to have a prolonged deterrent effect. I don't think we're, I don't think we should be thinking of it as an enforcement replacement because we don't unfortunately have that privilege of being enforced with the place of a police officer that could give, you know, citations for really excessive violations, ten miles per hour over is not the same as somebody who's recklessly driving at forty-five miles per hour over at a school zone. Um, that leads me to another question about the school zone. The time lot that goes with it, which is like, I believe, in an hour in the morning, are these cameras going to automatically calibrate to those time slots? Because I would hope that they would.
Great.
Um, back to the question of the data preservation, though, I would like to know also, is the data going to be FOI-able by anybody from the public? Any of the data that's retained, would that be subject to an FOI request? Okay, um, lastly, you said you were going to get to it and I might have missed it because at this point, like I said, I was exhausted waiting for my turn. Um, but is the revenue going directly to the town, a hundred percent of it minus the processing fee?
Not even minus the processing fee in the sense that the processing fee is the amount that the town can charge that can help the town to cover the costs that are associated with. Um, it probably also depends on the contract, the details of the contract with the vendor.
Okay, once and we know what's the big process.
Who sends who a check and how and what? Um, that is something that will be negotiated um with the vendor directly, so.
Okay, great.
And it might be different depending on which which vendor. I do want to say too, based on my conversations with the chief, I mean, even if there aren't, we couldn't possibly hire enough police officers in, I mean, we absolutely couldn't, even if we wanted to, it's impossible. You'd need someone there all the time, twenty-four seven, and, you know, they have other things that we want them to be doing. Um, and, you know, for the chief, this is a way of building capacity where it would be impossible to do so otherwise. And I think that's why they're focused on the most sensitive areas of our town with the most vulnerable of our population in neighborhoods where it's wonderful that so many of our kids and their parents can walk to school. You know, that's a privilege that we have, and so we want to make sure that they're safe when they do it.
I think that's that that was going to be my last closing point, actually, is that I think that's something we really need to realize, that people think our entire police department are traffic enforcement. In fact, in our town, we only have four people on our traffic enforcement division. Obviously, they they sub out to patrol, but then you go through A, B, C shift, you're, we don't have a lot of the cops in our department that are actually patrolling the speed. Would that be a wonderful, you know, love to have in a perfect scenario, sure, but that's not reality, that's not reality in local government, especially in in a a town that combines rural biocolic areas and really high-density population-driven areas. So I see this as actually a very cost benefit um analytically smart decision because I think that it would be wild to think that we can have all of these patrol officers doing um enforcement. I think we need to be very cautious about, you know, whether it opens doors or whether that's an amendment with language. I think that's something that makes a lot of sense to consider, but I think um this achieves, I know, a really important initiative that this administration has continued on, which is the importance of of traffic safety. And I think we have had some really unfortunate occurrences, um, specifically in my district, I can speak to it, as I said. Um, and we've done a lot of hard work, kind of opening the door to being able to use the safe streets analysis and and I don't, I don't think we should stop with just that, right? I think we should support, especially when the police officers are asking for it, so that's really just what I want to say.
Glad you saved me for last. I apologize if I've noted you now, thank you. Oh, Representative Zizma.
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator, Liz Zizma, District Four. I would ask the members of this body, if you don't already, to please read the police, weekly police reports and look at the number of traffic violations, the number and type of violations. I think if you don't know that, you're going to be shocked at how much they are actually accomplishing without any additional technology. And they're not capturing everybody who's running through red lights um and stop signs, so. Um, and I think Representative McCabe, stop signs cannot be incorporated into this. So we really are still going to miss all of that, you know, potentially deadly behavior, so.
The way that the statute is written, it seems clear to me anyway that even the state is recognizing that this is kind of a last resort, the the requirements to have cameras put in places are are intentionally high. You don't want to see, you know, every traffic light has a camera, they are certain, they have to prove it's a dangerous spot that a bunch of other stuff has been tried and it hasn't worked, so. Um, and designating areas for children and high-density, high pedestrian places where the risks are exponentially higher. So there, I think there is an appreciation that this is a pretty drastic um endeavor and certain safeguards seem to be put in place to offer the utmost protection to private.
Thank you, Representative Berman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It it is in some sense a a new law step that we're taking and thank you, Representative McCabe and everybody who sponsored or worked on this. Um, but at the same time, it's also incremental and modest because you get a a warning uh through signage significantly advance of where the camera is going to be. And then even if you violate the law when you pass the camera, you get a warning in the mail, uh, even after the first violation. And then a second violation um get gets you a a relatively modest uh fine. So i- it's a way of, as as was said before, um, getting people to, um, you know, to to recognize a deterrent and a deterrent in a particular area where we want to have a pretty strong deterrent to protect uh school children.
Thank you.
It's only in the first thirty days, not the first time.
Representative Carol, Representative Carol, if you say that question out loud for the rest.
The warning is the first thirty days of a camera being installed.
Right.
And then after those thirty days, your first fine is fifty-five dollars plus a fifteen dollar processing fee. Second offense is. And presumably third and fourth and fifth and sixth and seventh. Add in some items.
Thank you, any other questions? Seeing none, um, we're going to break off into our respective committees. For those online, please see the bottom of the warning for the numbers to call in. Uh, chairs, please remember to record the meetings. Also, remember that next week is back at our original location, the King's Highway is still on Monday um and it's still via Zoom next week. Um, also, if you have any questions regarding today's agenda, if you could please get them to me as soon as possible since we have a shortened week, um, this being Tuesday, and yes, Representative Carol.
Tell us what we're calling on.
You can go through the agenda.
It seems to be an issue every time.
Jeff is here, he was here, he's here, but he left.